Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council Workshop to set our agenda for our November meeting. Before we move into our items for discussion, I'm going to ask Jerry to do our prayer and H Chief you'll do our pledge for us if you'll all stand with us.
Please pray with me. Our Father, our God, we're so thankful for this day, Lord. We're so thankful for the blessings that you gave us, Father. We're thankful that we can live in a town that we feel safe and it's a great place for our children and our family to grow up in, Father. We're so thankful, Lord. We're thankful for those that protect us, our fire, our police, our healthcare workers, Lord, our military, Father. We just thank you for each one and continue to bless us, Lord, continue to walk, to watch over us, Father. Lord, as we go into this meeting now, I just pray that you'll just give us wisdom and as we go through these items to make the right decisions, Father, that's best for our community, our town, our state, Lord. Go with us now, Father, and I just pray that you forgive me when I fail you, Lord, and I pray this in Christ's name. Amen.
Place a flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jerry and HG. We will now move into our items for discussion. Our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract relative to the banking services with First Horizon Bank. Rex?
Mayor and council?
The town opened a request for proposals on banking services in late July of 2021. A committee was formed to evaluate the proposals. The committee members were Diane Waldron from the Treasury Department, Sierra Nolan from Finance and myself. The town used a two-step evaluation process. The first step of the process, the committee evaluated the banks based on governmental banking experience, the ability to meet our banking needs, the implementation process and understanding of the proposal. The second step was evaluating net pricing. First Horizon's bid was based on a reserve to offset monthly bank charges and a balance would earn interest tied to the Fed funds rate with a floor and no ceiling. And your package is the final evaluation summary of the proposals. The committee graded First Horizon Bank the top score by a large margin. The committee met with town manager Brian Hercules and we answered his questions. We are recommending entering into a contract with First Horizon for four years with two one-year extensions by mutual consent of both parties. And we're asking the council to authorize the mayor to enter into the contract.
Questions for Rex or Brian on this? Seeing none, we'll put it on our agenda for our November meeting. Moving on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28, part of parcel 44.00 to go from R6 to PRD. It's requested by Alyssa Seeburn. The property requested to be rezoned contains 39.1 acres and is located on Sam Ridley Parkway West and Motlow College Boulevard. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is one you all have seen several times because they keep requesting for deferral. But nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. This is a request for a PRD, 462 units total, which is a mix of apartments, duplexes and single-family, all for rent. This is a reduction in density versus what's allowed in currently in R6 of a little over 100 units. Again, nothing has changed on this since you looked at it on first reading. I'll be happy to answer any questions. The Planning Commission did recommend approval and I would also recommend approval.
Any reason you think that it won't come before us or do you feel pretty confident?
Nothing. I have not heard from them at all recently. So I plan to touch base with them again just to be sure.
Do you have any idea why it's been deferred?
I know originally they were, had some concerns about some sinkholes and some geotech investigations they were wanting to do before they bought the property, which I'm sure probably the zoning is probably the last major hurdle before they would be under contract, or under contract but have the obligation to purchase the property. So I haven't heard anything beyond that, though.
When would we be involved if there were sinkhole problems? I mean, TDEC come to us or how would that happen?
Well, that's primarily, it would be more of a TDEC involvement. For surely public works in the stormwater review, if they're using some of those sinkholes as part of their stormwater system, things like that, sometimes those are, TDEC certainly gets involved in that part of it as well.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, those due diligence periods can last four to six months sometimes to find all that stuff. Phase one studies and all that stuff has to be done.
Yeah. And my feelings is probably they requested this a little earlier than they should have. They should have got more of their due diligence done before they came to us.
Right.
Kevin, I guess this is question for you and for Jeff both. I've had a couple people question me about things coming in as all rental things. Are there any things legally we need to be looking into when something like this happens? Is there anything we can look into? Are we hearing any issues from any other communities? I know we've said we've heard this happening in Florida and some other places. Are there anything that we're hearing that we may need to be concerned about or do we know?
Obviously, as you stated, I think it's a national concern over subdivisions that are having investors or buying up large groups of homes and then renting them out, whereas the neighbors that were there that moved in maybe previous to that didn't realize that it was going to be that type of situation. At the moment, telling you right now, I don't know of any provision that we would have under Tennessee law to regulate that or address it in any way by zoning. However, I will look into that and get back to you at the council.
Okay. I know with this one, there's not anything we might be able to do, but I think it's probably a trend that's coming more than what we realize. And with this one, it's an entire development. So surely everybody that's going to be moving into that one will know it. But if you could just do a little research, I would appreciate it.
I think one of the things we've got to be careful of and watch, this one is already an R6 zoning, so it allows for the rental. You know, if this same development was coming in somewhere and it wasn't zoned R6, then we'd have a little more control over what the product could look like, so.
Right.
Usually they're taking, I'm sorry.
Well, I was gonna ask, is that questions we need to be asking moving forward? You know, we're assuming that most of the homes would be for sale, but the way this is happening, I mean, who would have ever thought people would come in and develop whole neighborhoods or whole developments that the entire thing was going to be rental? So I just think, I just want to make sure our bases are covered.
I'm seeing a lot of restrictions being put on the HOAs now to allow 10, 15% of the neighborhood to be rental at max. Now, I don't know who keeps up with that, but HOAs are starting to govern that themselves. So when you think about an HOA, some people don't want one, other people do. That's one of the good things the HOA can apply to.
But is there really a provision if this came to us as an R3 that says within an R3, R3 cannot be rented? Or cannot be all rented?
No.
Exactly.
But are there any other rules and regulations we could put in place that other people are doing that might be worth looking into? And I guess that's where I was going with it. You know, these communities that it's already been there or it's already happened, things that we probably have not even thought about that could be negatives or positives, either one. So. Okay. Any other questions or comments on this one?
Just to kind of follow up with Marv, when we do see them on the planning level and it's a PRD, we, more often than not, and I mean in the 90 percentile plus, we're asking or requiring a third-party HOA. And I guess the point being if it came in as R3 without any current looks at what we can do with R3, then there's real no way, there's really no way of knowing. And even if we did, I'm not sure there'd be a basis of denial as things are right now. So to your point.
So if a PRD, because we have the option of turning one down for whatever reason we choose, could it be turned down because the whole thing's rental?
No. And just to clarify, is when you're looking at the PRD, you're looking to see if it matches what our administrative process says that must be met. But there would not be anything in there. And I would be skeptical, especially knowing the tone of the legislature that there's anything forthcoming that would address that item.
I would agree with that, with what we're seeing recently. So, okay. Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 27, part of parcel 6.00 to go from R1 to C2. It's requested by Matt Taylor. On behalf of the Sam Davis Memorial Association, the property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 4.02 acres and is located at the corner of Nissan Drive and Sam Davis Road. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a rezoning request. It is, of course, is at the corner of Sam Davis Road and Nissan Drive, currently zoned R1. Land use plan would support an open space and as well as office retail multifamily mix in this area. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R1. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request and I would also recommend approval.
We had quite a bit of discussion about this last time. Is there anything else you have questions or want to discuss at this point? Seeing nothing, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item four, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 19, parcel 12.02 to go from R1 to PRD. It's requested by Randy Sexton. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 6.5 acres and is located on Sharp Springs Road. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request on Sharp Springs Road. It's about 300 feet north of the intersection with Jefferson Pike. Land use plan would support a low-density residential here. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1 and R2. This proposed PRD is for 27 single-family houses with one access from Sharp Springs Road. There is a minimum square footage, it's 1,800 square feet, density is about 4.15 units per acre. The roads would be private within this development, but they would be built to town standards. The houses would not be built on individual lots, but would be sold through a horizontal property regime with all the property owned and maintained by the third-party managed HOA, just like we just talked about. The developer would be dedicating right away and widening Sharp Springs Road in front of his property. And in addition, the sidewalk within the development would be extended along Sharp Springs Road South to eventually be extended to connect to the sidewalk. The TDOT's gonna build along Jefferson Pike, as well as a pedestrian connection would be, as shown, to connect to the trails within Sharp Springs Park to the west of this site. Sewer may gravity to this site, but if not, the developer would be required to upsize the existing lift station that is near the northwestern corner of the property to provide adequate capacity. And the Planning Commission did review this to recommend approval and I would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this one?
Kevin, you had heard anything from the property owner right next to him, have you? I know Mark talked with him. I didn't know if he'd heard anything else or not.
I haven't heard from folks on this property or this request at all, actually.
Jerry, actually, I had that property owner meet with the developer. I put them together and she seemed very satisfied. What came from it?
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll put it on the agenda. Move on to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the approved PUD for property located on Tax Map 57A, Group A, parcel 24.01, requested by Clyde Roundtree on behalf of Ed Freeman. The property requested contains approximately 9.47 acres and is located at 5916 New Nashville Highway. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
Yes, this is a request on New Nashville Highway about a half a mile northwest of the Florence Road intersection. Land use plan would support commercial development in this area. Surrounding zoning is C2 in town and RM in Rutherford County. This PUD was approved many years ago. It does allow for conventional self-storage, RV and boat storage for an existing residence to remain. It's a kind of a zoning that we inherited from the county when we annexed it. We zoned it basically consistent with what the county had done. This amendment would add a building, which would be a two-story, 9,500 square feet climate-controlled facility. This property is not served by sanitary sewers, so prior tuitions of a building permit, the developer would have to provide verification from TDEC that the existing system is adequate. And also have to provide verification from CUD that the fire flow requirements can be met. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with the condition that they revise the exterior elevations to meet the requirements of design review. And so I would also recommend approval with that condition.
Questions for Kevin on this one? Okay. We'll move on to item six, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 50C, Group A, parcel 26.00 to go from R1 to PRD. It's requested by Clyde Roundtree on behalf of Scott Butler. The property requested to be rezoned contains 2.2 acres and is located on Terrytown Drive. And this is a second reading. Kevin?
This is a request to, on Terrytown Drive, about 700 feet west of the intersection of the Valley Green. Land use plan would support medium-density residential here. Surrounding zoning is all R1. The request of PRD was for five single-family lots utilizing a 60-foot lot width and seven-and-a-half-foot side setbacks. As recommended by the Planning Commission, the PRD would be four lots with 75-foot lot widths and 15-foot side setbacks. All other aspects of that original request would remain, including the minimum house size. They would have a 35-foot front setback with a double with driveways, which is consistent with what we require. It would also have, the common area would also be owned by the HOA and managed by a third party. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval with those changes. And I would also recommend approval.
Any questions or comments for Kevin? I know, planning, you all worked closely with the developer to make things work for everybody involved. So we appreciate that. But anything else for Kevin? Okay, then we'll move on to item seven, which is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance 21-22, adopting the 2021-2022 fiscal year budget specifically, the fee schedule relative to the missile code violation. This is a second reading. Jeff?
Yes, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the second reading. This is just an amendment to the fee schedule so that in the municipal court for the charge of failure to report an accident, the fine of $50 will apply.
Questions for Jeff on this? Okay. Seeing none, we are going to move on to a long list of contracts. So the first one is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Powell Corporation relative to the wastewater treatment plant, microfiltration maintenance. Glad to see you change that tie.
It's not game week.
Oh.
We'll have a good one on next week.
What happened last week? I couldn't remember.
I guess the same thing. It happens every time Alabama plays somebody.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear the score. So go ahead. Sorry.
Not every time.
Thanks for that vote of confidence for Tennessee. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. I have the utmost confidence in the wastewater treatment plant, though. There you go. You're welcome.
Well, thank you very much. So this first one on the agenda is the annual maintenance contract with Powell for the microfiltration modules, and it is the same cost as last year.
Questions on this contract? Seeing none, we'll put that on the agenda and move on to item nine, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with MR Systems Incorporated relative to the water treatment plant software and hardware maintenance and repair.
Yes, ma'am. This is for the SCADA software maintenance at the wastewater, or the water plant, excuse me, and the cost is the same as last year.
Okay. Questions on this one? Item 10, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with bid documents with Inzegard Construction Group LLC relative to water line replacement along the east side of North Lowry from Sam Hager Street to Jackson Street.
Yes. So this is actually, it was part of a bigger project. It's part of the North Lowry project that is under easement acquisition right now. But we need to do this portion to get out of Charles's Lowry Street, Streetscape project. There you go. So Inzegard on face value was not the low bidder, but after evaluation, the other bidder did not meet the requirements and plug in the cost for the addendum. So we are recommending Inzegard. They did have a calculation error in their bid, which would reduce the cost of their bid by about $4,000.
Okay. Questions for Mike on this? We know how much Charles is enjoying that Lowry Street project. We don't want to do anything to hold him up on that. We'll move on to item 11, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute, authorizing resolution for SRF for the Sam Ridley Weekly Lane Water Module Project.
Okay. So items 11 through 14, we will need to remove from the agenda. So here's what's going on with SRF. The I&amp;I project, it is still under financial sufficiency review. So that's going to take a little while on that one. On the Sam Ridley Weekly, we still have to do the public hearing, which will be at the council meeting, but they will not issue the loan documents or the authorizing resolution until they issue the Fonzie, which is gonna be a couple of days after the public hearing. The public hearing has to come first. So we'll do public hearing. A few days later, SRF will issue the Fonzie. It's ready to go. Soon as they issue it, which is a 30-day period, they'll send us the loan docs and authorizing resolution and we can move forward, so.
So we don't need to put placeholders for these? We need to wait until after?
I'll put them back on the, another agenda. Yes, the next agenda, but we still need to hold the public hearing.
Okay. At 6 o'clock?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So then we will move on to, you said through 14, 11 through 14, right?
Right.
Okay. So we'll move on to 15, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an engineering services agreement with Thomason-Hutton relative to the rehabilitation of the Rock Springs Road elevated water storage tank.
Right. So this storage tank is having a coating failure. We have not done maintenance on this tank since 2005. And this is a tank that's going to have to be sandblasted, so we'll have to drape it and do all that stuff to keep it from getting all over everything around there. This is behind the Rock Springs Middle School. And this is a contract with Thomason-Hutton to do the design, the bid work and the inspection stuff.
Questions for Mike on this one?
I have a question that's actually not related to this one, but just in the water tank area. And I don't think it's our water, I'm sure it's not our water tank up on Sanford Nob. You know what I'm talking about, though?
We don't have, no, but we don't have any water tank there.
You know where Sanford Nob is, though?
I do not.
Sanford Nob is in the Sam Ridley Parkway and go right and you're into Laverne. So it's up on top of that hill right there. But since they cleared all that land off of it, you can see the water tank up there. It looks like it's in bad shape. I'm sure it's Laverne's, but I didn't know if they use it anymore or not.
That I do not know.
Okay. I just thought that you might, because I've had somebody ask me about it and I said, no, it's not ours. But I'll see what I can find out. Okay.
I've had more questions about that property being cleared than anything lately. So. Okay. Item 16, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with United Systems relative to support of the AMI metering software and equipment.
This is, an annual agreement is for, not only for water, but for the gas AMI stuff, for them to provide support and, you know, come in as we need them to check collectors, repeaters, anything like that.
Questions for Mike on this one? Item 17, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Motorola Solutions relative to the police department radio maintenance. Hey, Chief?
Ma'am?
How are you?
I'm wonderful. How are y'all?
Great.
Good. This is our annual maintenance contract that we do every year on our radio system. Asking approval for the council to let the mayor sign the contract.
Questions for Chief on this? Just out of curiosity, is there anywhere within the city limits that we have issues in regards to radio not being able to?
Not since, I don't think since when was it 800 we've had any?
Okay.
No. None that I'm aware of, anyway.
Okay. Great. Questions for Chief? Okay, we'll move on to item 18, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal contract with Presidio relative to the services of SmartNet and licenses for Cisco phone systems and Cisco voicemail systems. Well, I think this is the first time that you've presented with us.
This is. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council.
We'll be easy.
So what we have before you is a request for maintenance on our phone system software. This is a renewal agreement. This is actually a five-year request that will lock us in at the rate of about $19,575 per year. Last year, we paid a little over $21,000 for the renewal. We got two one-year quotes, both that are about $8,000 over this. This is being purchased from a NASMO contract, which alleviates the need to go up for RFP.
Questions?
I'm starting to think on Carl the first time.
I know. The first time. I know.
Thank you.
Great. Item 19, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Tennessee Rehabilitation Center relative to the recreation field use, area used by the Parks and Rec Department. Hey, Mike?
Mayor and Council, how are y'all? I just wanted to bring this back to you. I think we started this agreement back in 2006 when we got to looking at that. So it's been that long. We're just asking for approval to use the rehab center, six acres over there where their practice area is. We also did ask for permission to use their parking lot. You'll see that's been added in the exhibit. We weren't getting use of that, but they've now started letting us use that again, which helps teams migrate back over there.
Great. I know it makes it easier, especially for ones that have little ones and trying to haul little ones over there in addition to kids and all that. So, okay. Questions for Mike on this? Okay. Seeing none, we will add that to the agenda and move on to item 20, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Site Engineering Consultants Incorporated relative to the design of the Rocky Fork Ammival Road widening project.
Mayor and Council, this contract with SCC is for the survey, right-of-way determinations, design, bidding and construction administration services for the widening of Rocky Fork Ammival Road. The project limits are from Ammival Road, which is State Route 102, up to Rocky Fork Road with approximate length of 2.3 miles. The design will be a three-lane curbing gutter section with sidewalk.
Questions for Charles on this? Okay. Then we'll move on to item 21, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract addendum to the striping contract with Kerr Brothers to include spray thermoplastic striping for four-inch and six-inch wide white edge marking and four-inch and six-inch wide yellow centerline marking, pavement markings.
Yes. Very good.
Could you add any more to that?
Uh, no, just that we went out to bid for this and Kerr Brothers has the capability of doing spray thermo, which is, saves us a little bit of money per linear mile. They had put in a bid, when they put in their bid, it was $3,500 per linear mile for the long white stripes you see on the edge or the long yellow stripes you see down the middle. And they can reduce that. The price can come down significantly if they use the spray thermo on it as well. It provides the same thickness, still meets MUTCD requirements.
Questions for Tom on this?
The difference in
The difference in spray and conventional thermoplastic?
Conventional thermoplastic is actually like a roll of plastic that's superheated, laid down, and it binds into the asphalt. Spray is where the plastic is heated and sprayed down like a spray, like a little spray paint onto the asphalt. And it adheres actually a lot better than the conventional thermoplastic. It lasts a little bit longer.
I've not been on this lately, but I'll tell you one place that I don't know if there's something we can do temporarily. If you're on Wolverine on the Lowe's side, and you're going to come across, you know what I'm talking about?
Yes, yes.
People don't, that want to turn right or go straight, the ones that are going straight aren't sure which lane that they're supposed to be in. Are they supposed to be in the right one, or are they supposed to be in the one that's also the turn lane? Because where we're redoing that, there's no, there's no arrow there to say straight or, so I don't know if that's something, I mean, I don't know if we're so close that it's not going to matter, but I've had a couple of people say, "I'm not sure which lane I'm supposed to be in to go straight."
Yeah, and I'll work with Charles on looking at that, because I know Jones Brothers have put down some temporary striping on us. We'll see what we can do about putting some striping further up and maybe some signage so they can see next to the traffic signal as well to determine which lane, kind of what we did at Sam Ridley and Stonecrest.
Yeah, just one that people have said something about, so. Okay, any questions on twenty-one? Item twenty-two, consideration of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 20-12, adopting the 20, ooh, 2020, 2020 to 2021 fiscal year budget relative to the General Fund, State Street Aid Fund, Drug Fund, Stormwater Fund, and Capital Projects Fund, and this is a first reading. Rex?
Yes, ma'am. These are the 2021 fiscal year end budget amendments, and we have some appropriations that need to be made. The Stormwater Fund had a deficit due to some streets that needed emergency repairs. I think we almost doubled what we typically budget with adding in these repairs. You'll notice the premium pay amendments in the general and stormwater funds that was funded by the American Rescue Plan Act. There was also an amendment for the all-inclusive playground that was a joint project with Smyrna Rotary Club, Christie Houston Foundation, and the town.
Questions for Rex on any of this? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item twenty-three, which is consideration of a resolution to set dates and times for the 2022 council meetings and work sessions. It is hard to believe we're already setting stuff for 2022. Council, have you had a chance to look over these? Any that you had concerns about? Is everybody okay with that December work session? Is that usually, do we usually do it then? Anybody? No problems? Okay, okay, then we will put those on the agenda. I don't have anything under other. Is there anything under other tonight?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, then we will do status reports. Tom, anything?
Mayor, Council, just want to mention that we are in the burn-in phase. I mentioned it before, we're in burn-in phase for ITS one and two. Everything is connected, and all the signals that we are having this phase, thirty-eight signals are coming back to the town event, the operations center we have here at Town Hall, and we're looking forward to moving forward on phases three, four, and five, getting approval on that, and getting to construction phase next.
Great. Any questions for Tom on anything? Thank you. Jeff Craig?
Mayor, Council, just a couple of quick things. Our department is kicking off open enrollment next week, next couple of weeks, for people to choose their, employees to choose their benefits for 2022, so we'll be busy with that. And then also in the middle of our United Way campaign, pledge campaign, and so some of you may come out for chili last Friday. We made some money for the United Way campaign Friday. We're doing some pancakes in the morning for employees, so feel free to come out and grab you a stack, and all those funds will go to benefit our local United Way.
Great. Questions for Jeff on this? Thanks, Jeff. Kevin?
Just one thing, we talked a lot in the last several months about our Rocky Fork Road to McEwen connection, and we are having our kickoff meeting with our consultant next week, so we're getting the ball started with that study.
Great.
That'd be done by next year, right?
Early next year. The study will be done. The road won't be finished yet, no.
It's not what I meant, yeah.
But the study will be, yeah, we should be finished first half next year.
So talk to us a little bit about the process now that, that we're working with them.
Yeah, the process will be certainly the, working with us as the league folks, but also all of the other municipalities in Williamson and Ruthford County, to create that corridor. Right now, we're, we're basically, it's big-picture corridor, where's the best route to go, the most cost-efficient, and we'll try to look at that certainly. You know, any environmental factors we need to avoid, all those kind of things. And then once we get that, then each individual community can put it on their major thoroughfare plan to reserve it. Any development that happens, we can require those right-of-ways and those kind of things. And then at that point, once we have all that documented, then we can also start the process of working with TDOT and GNRC, try to get some funding to get the ball rolling on it. Obviously, it's, it's under construction partially or built partially and then planned already, coming eastward from the Brentwood Franklin area, and so we've got to start the process to go west now.
Had quite a bit of discussion. Derek Adams, who is the new mayor in Nolansville, is on the task force, and so he and I have had quite a bit of discussion. I know that they're still pretty up in the air about exactly where they want it and all that. Could that hold the process up?
Well, certainly it could, I guess, but I think our, our goal is that we would, between all the municipalities working together, that we would pick the, find that route. They had more or less agreed, but I know that was previous administration, so it's, certainly everything can change, but it's not on a map yet, so that hurts us. But I also know they're trying to work through some issues just on their major, putting a major thoroughfare plan update together and those things as well at the same time, so. And I also know that from a staffing standpoint, they're trying to hire a new planning director too, so.
Right, well, and I will say, he was, he's been very open to everything we've had discussion about, so he understands the importance. He actually lived in Smyrna for a while, so I don't think they will be a stumbling block. I just think that making sure that it's where they want it to be, so. Well, good, I think we're all excited about that, because I think that shows the regional connectivity, which is what we've been looking for in regards to being able to start talking about the interchange again, so glad to hear it. So the kickoff meeting is going to be with all, all of the municipalities?
Actually, we're working, this kickoff is really mainly just us.
Okay.
And then they will be beginning, they're going to meet individually with each community and those kind of things. I think we, I'm sure at some point, we probably will have a joint meeting where everyone gets together. But I think initially, this meeting next week is really just with us to really kind of get the ball rolling, because again, we talked with all the other communities, and they all were going to, of course, participating financially, but they all pretty much said, "Smyrna, we're okay with you guys taking the lead on it." So certainly they're participating, but we're taking the lead.
All right. Other questions for Kevin?
Not a question, but you know, I'm glad that everybody's already having these discussions. I know that Tim and I on planning are starting to see development requests out that way. We're having to protect those, those particular areas where we think the concept could be, much like we did when we did the, the work there at the interchange. We saved the proper mental property there for commercial development as well, so I'm glad everybody's on the same page, and we can look at it from both ends.
Other questions or comments? Thanks, Kevin. Rex?
We're really glad to wrap up the, the bank RFP. That's quite a time-consuming project for us. Now we'll be getting back on the audit, and our local option sales tax and our state shared funds are, we're on, on budget in those two areas.
Questions for Rex? Thank you, sir. Kathy?
Mayor and Council, just very quickly, wanted to remind everybody that we're excited about the return of the Christmas Parade, and the deadline to enter is two weeks from tomorrow. It's Friday and November the 12th. Think we're up to thirty-three entries already, but are certainly excited to have anyone else join us as well.
It's a great event, so thanks, Kathy. Questions for Kathy? Okay, Chief? Nothing? Charles?
Mayor and Council, just giving you an update on the Sam Ridley widening. They were putting in the grout today. That's between the curb and the cut they made. We're looking next week to start milling all Sam Ridley, and then paving will be coming after that, so we're still on schedule for substantial completion by the end of the year.
Great.
So where everything's lined up for that, the Lee Victory Rec Park, we've got all the stormwater in, the streetlight foundations are being put in, so that one is still coming along. On Lowry Street, we're looking at next week to make the traffic pattern change, and I'll be working with Kathy on getting that information out on how we're going to be changing the traffic pattern through downtown. TDOT would not let us drop a lane in each direction for construction, and they would only allow us to work nine to three, the contractor, but they did compromise with us, and now we will be taking six feet off each side lane, so we'll be taking half, and just putting four through lanes through downtown.
Okay, questions for Charles on this? Okay, thank you, sir. Todd? Sierra? Mike?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just want to say, on behalf of the Parks Department, we want to thank everybody who's involved with the last two weekends with the events we had downtown, and then Halloween in the park last week, so it's sponsored by Smyrna Natural Gas, and then, of course, we have fire and police and many different departments, golf carts and lift trucks and everything else set that up. So it takes a village, and that's what we have here, and volunteers, so we had a lot of, a lot of people helping us out there, and I just want to say thanks from the Parks Department and our staff.
Heard lots of good things about the Haunting on Front Street. Wasn't able to make it down there, but was it Halloween in the Park, and it was a great event. I think everybody had a good time, was glad to get out, and a safe place for kids to get out and collect candy, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for everything you all do.
Well, we appreciate it.
Anything else for Mike? Okay, other Mike?
Hello?
Chief?
Hello?
Carl?
Good morning.
Okay, Ms. Diane?
We've got forty-four new business licenses.
Forty-four, wow, that's a lot. Great. Brian?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I do have a couple of things I'd like to share with you tonight. First, the town's Veterans Day Ceremony will be held November the 11th at 11:00 a.m. at the Captain Coos Memorial. We invite the community to come out and join us for this special event, and we do this in conjunction with our VFW local here. It's, it's always a very nice event, and it's one of those that makes you stop and think a little bit, and we're happy to let you know that Colonel James Allen Reed, who is a Smyrna...
Boy.
Smyrna boy, will be our guest speaker for that this year.
And for those of you that don't know him, is that?
And he's not related.
It's Jimmy.
Jimmy.
Jimmy. And it's also where our Veterans Memorial is.
That's correct.
It's not just where the Captain Coos Memorial is, it's also where the Veterans Memorial had been moved, which I think was very appropriate.
Yes, ma'am. The twentieth annual Firefighters for Food Event is just a few weeks away. We invite the community to come out and support the fire department as they collect non-perishable items for the benefit of Nourish Food Bank, a local food bank. That'll be Saturday, November the 13th, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Walmart on Enin Springs Road. Chief, I'm hearing, you'll be there, and we need to make sure we have some big trucks to carry everything back with us, so. I know Mike has spoke to this just a minute ago, but I just wanted, again, to thank the Parks and Recreation Department. I had a chance to talk to some people, and I truly believe we've got the best Parks and Recs Department in the state of Tennessee. Our people do a great job, and they put on two fantastic Halloween events, the Haunting on Front Street and then Halloween in the Park, and they do that, as Mike mentioned, with a lot of help, and I just wanted to say again, thank you to our police, fire departments, street department, all the folks that come out and support those events. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of people had a good time, including myself. I enjoy coming to those things. The last thing I'll talk about, I'm not sure who that is, some of our Parks people in costume, so. Remind everybody, we have a Love Where You Live program here in Smyrna. We still combat quite a bit of complaints from our citizens about litter, people dumping large items on the roads, those type of things, you know, folks, it, it, continue to say, "This is a personal choice you make." Love where you live, you know, take the extra time to find the trash receptacles, take it home, put it in the dumpsters, whatever that is. Please don't litter on our streets, and, so be nice and don't litter.
Anything else? Sir, tell them not to be a litter bug.
Don't be a litter bug.
Don't be a litter bug. Jeffrey L.
Just a reminder that the Tennessee Legislature is in session right now, so we'll be watching that, and I spoke with a good friend, Beecher, today, Jigsaw, and obviously, they're always on top of things as well, but I will provide you with the report once it's concluded.
Spoke to him last night. It's interesting.
Yeah.
Very interesting, so. Any questions for Jeff? Raquel?
Wanted to also say kudos on the park events. Those were very well attended, and everybody seemed to have a great time. I also attended the health fair that was held last Friday for the employees, and found out a lot of good information, so I appreciate that, Jeff Craig. And also was privileged to be, to be able to attend the Smyrna Zama anniversary, Sister City Anniversary, and that, thought that was a really interesting, neat event, how it went off. And lastly, I want to say, for everyone, since Halloween is this coming weekend, for everyone to have a safe Halloween. That's it?
Great. HG?
To tag on to Raquel, speaking of the event with Zama yesterday, I want to wish Mayor Endo, former Mayor Endo, a happy birthday. We got to meet him, but we've met him multiple times over the years, and he's a good friend to Smyrna. But I didn't make Halloween in the park, but I went to the Haunting on Front Street, and, you know, I just love going downtown. The whole town just gets involved there, and it's, it's a great event, and, and I just really think that the council, the town, the businesses on Front Street, everybody has really done a good job pulling all that together over the years, and it's just a great place to be, and I look forward to the Christmas down there, which is, will be coming up soon. Outside of that, be kind and don't litter, and be kind and shop local.
It'd be nice, I didn't take your catchphrase.
Okay, okay.
Tim?
Honestly, these guys have said it all, so nothing further for me tonight.
Great. Jerry?
Well, yeah, they certainly have said it all. I want to reiterate a few things. Was able to attend the Haunting on Front Street and the Halloween in the Park, and as everybody else has said, Parks Department, the police, the fire, the volunteers, everyone did a fantastic job. We, we always have a great time going to that and just seeing the kids and what kind of fun they have, and the adults as well, so really did enjoy that. Also, got to attend the Smyrna High School Hall of Fame inductees Ceremony. They always do a very nice job with that, and just, again, congratulations to those that were inducted. The thirty-year Zama Sister City Program, that was really fun for me. It's the first time I've gotten to be involved in that, with the exception of being on the committee, so that was very well done from both our town and Japan as well. And also, just had family friends pass away, their mom, the Sumraul family, just want to keep them in your thoughts and your prayers, and some of you probably know the Gassers, and they're related there, so just thoughts and prayers for them, and Mayor, that's all I've got.
Thanks. Marky Mark?
Just after what Jerry just said about Lydia and her mother and the loss of that, so our condolences certainly go out to Emery and Lydia. We, some of us were able...
Uh, we, some of us were able to go to the Crumble Cookie ribbon cutting open, ribbon cutting opener, and, uh, man, what a place. So if you're looking for some really cool-looking cookies, they're up there in the Kohl Shopping Plaza there on the end of the building, and they were busy. I think they're gonna be...
They're great tasting cookies, too.
Yes, yeah, well, I mean, they are, but they were super busy.
They were busy.
And so I think they're gonna sell some cookies up there. Uh, echo what everybody said, Mike, to your staff out there at the park, you guys just, every year, just nail it, you do a good job, it goes off seamless. There's a lot of people that work behind the scenes there as well that, um, you graciously have exposed some of those people. I like to think, you know, there's, it's even deeper than that. We have employees and staff and some of the directors in the room, it costs money, and there's traffic control and all those kinds of things, and, um, so just a big thank you to everybody in the room, our directors and staff, and all the employees, that it's a busy time of the year for us, and so there's a lot of events and things going on, and it's hard to get to all of them, but every time you go, it's, it's just like seamless. They just really make it look easy, so thank you guys for all the work that you do there. Um, the Motlo dedication, Hyatt Spivey Building, that we were able to go out and, and give dedication to this past week. Mayor did a great job speaking on behalf of a former mayor of ours, and, um, Motlo is a growing campus, and they've got some good things going on over there, so I was real excited just to be able to attend it and see how much Motlo has grown just from a thought, potentially that Mayor Spivey had many years ago, that, uh, is fruition now, and you see the building and being named after those two families, so it's pretty neat. The Sister City thing, 30-year celebration that we did, uh, a couple evenings ago was, um, when, when you think about the relationships that, I think at the former, former mayor Spivey, uh, former Mayor Ridley, uh, when Nissan came to town, and, mayor, your family has a lot of connection there, you know, with your grandfather and your dad, it's kinda neat to hear about the grandfather clock that your grandfather delivered to Zama Japan and even went and fixed when it wasn't working right. So there's a lot of history and relationships between those two communities that we're really fond of and proud to be a part of. I thought the event went off great. Brian, I know you had your hands in that, getting it organized and all that, so, thank you.
A lot of, a lot of team members.
I know you did, and that's, that's the reason I like to talk about the team out there, because, uh, I know there's a lot of events and things that go unsaid. Um, and with that, that's, uh, Veterans Day is coming up, you know, kind of semi-parcial to our veterans, and, and just, I know we'll probably meet again before then, but, uh, just keep your veterans in mind, they're, they're owed a tremendous gratitude from us, and that's all I have, mayor.
Couple of items, our Top Gun Night Run is a week and a day away, hard to believe that it's already here. If you've not gotten registered, we encourage you to do so, you can register online at thetownofsmyrna.org. It will be, um, uh, Friday, November 5th at 7:00 p.m., and, um, uh, there are still a few spots open, so if you know of someone who is interested in participating, um, if you will let them know about the event. Our Christmas Parade Food Drive will, um, will take donations for that from November 15th to December 10th. Our goal is 50,000 non-perishable items to benefit Nourished Food Bank, and items can be dropped off at the lobby here at Town Hall, and, um, council, I hope that you have started making your phone calls for that. Um, we've talked a little bit about the Sister City Agreement, um, that we recently celebrated. It was our 30-year anniversary of the Sister City Agreement with Zama City, Japan, and I can't tell you how grateful we are to the ones that came before us that initiated that program. HG, I know you were a part of that original group, and, you know, it originally came about as economic development relationship between the cities when Nissan came to be here in Smyrna, but then has turned into so much more with the Sister City Student-Based Exchange Program. Um, our students, um, that participate in this, they're ambassadors, not only ambassadors for the town of Smyrna, the state of Tennessee, but for our country, when they go over to represent and learn about, um, other cultures and, um, and diversity, so I appreciate that we've continued this program. Um, Brian put out an invitation, invitation to our consulate general, um, of Japan that is in Nashville, um, and she was gracious enough to come, and she's always so great about coming to events that we host that deal with Japan, so we were glad to have her, as well as the Sister City Committee. They do a great job, um, and work really hard, um, not just on the year that they travel, but, um, on those years leading up to as well. Nominations are open for the Kenneth Coon Victory Lifetime Service Award and the Young Leader Award. Um, to learn more and to nominate a distinguishing individual, um, please email Marty Smith at martysmith@townofsmyrna.org, or visit our town website. So, um, hard to believe that's already back around again. Couple of things that have taken place since we have been together, we actually went out and toured Taylor Farms, which was, I mean, it's always amazing to me what's taking place right in our own backyard, so, um, thanks just for Taylor Farms for hosting us, got to visit the Rogers Group, had a little barbecue, and, um, enjoyed being down in the pit with them. Um, Jeff Craig, you all did a great job with the health fair, um, it was a busy day, I was not able to attend, but I heard many people talking about it, so thanks for y'all did. Um, we've talked a little bit about Motlo and the, um, uh, Hyatt Spivey Building that was, uh, dedicated, but I don't think people realize the vision that Bob had in seeing Motlo come to Smyrna, and it's more than just about educating the students, it's definitely something we use bringing, um, business and industry here. They want to see what type of education is offered within a community, and our students are able to stay here and go to college. With Tennessee Promise, they are busting at the seams, and, um, if you've not taken the drive back behind the Y, I encourage you to do so. I think you'll be really surprised at the way it looks back there, so kudos to them and thank them, and thanks to Motlo for all they do, but also thanks to the Hyatt Spivey families for making the contribution of making that building happen. Last but not least, Halloween is Sunday night. We encourage you to celebrate if you choose, but to do so safely. I have been asked many times, um, does the town choose a day for Halloween to happen? We do not. That is a family decision, and you will have to choose when and if you participate, and, but we just encourage you, if you're participating, to do it safely, but if you're out on the roads, to also make sure that, um, you're watching out for those little ones because they are so excited and it's easy for them to dart out across the road, so. Council, anything else? If nothing else, then we are adjourned.